Let the call is meeting together, please. Uh, the order, John, would you deliver the indication?
Dear Lord, thank you for us giving opportunity to meet here and hopefully make good decisions for the city of Jasper, be throughout, be with us throughout 2019, keep our police officers, our firemen, our city workers safe, and please, please, please be helping all our troops overseas and keeping them safe too. Amen. We pray. Amen.
Entertaining the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under your power, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council, the agenda, a couple of items. Uh, on the agenda you received, we traditionally have reappointed this the mayor of Pro Tem annually, uh, but it has been called that the ordinances or the code, uh, charter does not require such, it's a biannually, so, well, every other year. And with that, we'll forego that from the old agenda and on the old business, uh, we've added a sewer line easement on Burton Street, attorney Bill Pickett that was left off, it was sent to you, as well as Main Street, uh, closing the car club, uh, for a committee report from Kurt Ratfield and Tony Fountain this evening, was not on the old agenda. And I think, uh, the former economic developer was removed as well, so, clean up the agenda. Would entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
We're being asked to review to approve annual position appointments, but we have no list of those appointments.
I'm gonna give them to you this evening.
So, I'd like to, uh, make a motion that we table that until we have such time to review that list and go over it.
Well, let's get in the meeting then, because I could bring you in, uh, before we approve the agenda, then we can come in and then we get to that point, then you can ask for that motion. Any other discussion on the agenda? Being on our favor, what was your hands? That's unanimous. Next item, read the minutes of the December 3rd, 2018, regular meeting, followed by December 10th, if it's into December 13th, so I'll let you start, if you'll identify each one you read, will it?
Okay, the first one I'll read is a regular council meeting held on Monday, December 3rd, 2018. Mayor Weaver called the meeting to order promptly at 6:00 PM. He requested Lonnie Waters to give the indication. He requested Kurt Ratfield leave the closing allegiance. Mayor Weaver asked that the agenda be reviewed and approved by council with a correction to item H should state 2019 and not 2018 in operating budget request for approval. Councilmember Ann Snave made a motion to approve the agenda with a correction. Councilmember John Faust seconded the motion, motion carried unanimously. Mayor Weaver stated for the record that Councilmember Tony Fountain was absent from this meeting. City Clerk Lieutenant Laura read the minutes of the November 5th, 2018, regular meeting. Councilmember John Faust made a motion to adopt the minutes read. Councilmember Kurt Ratfield seconded the motion. Motion carried by free votes with Ann Snave staying as she was absent from the November 5th, 2018 meeting. Ms. Laura read the minutes of the November 14th, 2018, public hearing. Councilmember Kurt Ratfield made a motion to adopt the minutes read. Councilmember Ann Snave seconded the motion, motion carried unanimously. Ms. Laura read the minutes of the November 15th, 2018, special call meeting. Councilmember Ann Snave made a motion to adopt the minutes read. Councilmember Kurt Ratfield seconded the motion, motion carried unanimously. Item A under old business, Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Lenny to give an update on the city manager cert. Mr. Lenny stated that council had narrowed the candidates down to four and we contact, and would be conducting interviews during a special call meeting to take place on December 10th. He stated that council had been asked to pick 12 questions, terminal lists that the Carl Vincent Institute had provided to ask candidates. Item B under old business, Mayor Weaver recognized Jim Lenny to give an update on the city sanitation rate increase. Mr. Lenny stated that he had given council rate increases at work session last week and asked if council had a recommendation. Mayor Weaver asked for discussion, there was no discussion. Councilmember Kurt Ratfield made a motion to approve the monthly rate increases presented in council books to advertise that the program be grown and the new rates put in place in February 2019 for a term of six months for review and reset. Mayor Weaver asked that the rates be read aloud for the record. Councilmember, Councilmember Ratfield read the rate increases as follows. Residential customers rate increased from 14 to 20. Residential senior customers rate increases from 12 to 18. Housing Authority customer rate increases from 480 to 14. Commercial one day service increased from 15 to 25. Commercial two day service increased from 20 to 50. Commercial four day service increased from 30 to 100. Commercial five day service increased from 100 to 125. And restaurant customers rate increased from 100 to 150. Councilmember Ann Snave seconded the motion. Mayor Weaver called for discussion. Councilmember Ratfield stated that at the end of the six months after rates are increased, that council's questions be answered. Mr. Lenny stated for council to submit their questions to him, motion carried unanimously. Item C under old business, Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Lenny to present to council request to change vacation policy for police officers, firefighters, and water plant operators. He stated that the change would be from 40 hours per week to scheduled hours work. This would be a change for firefighters for 56 to 56 weekly vacation hours, for police to 42 weekly vacation hours, and water plant operators to 42 with the vacation hours accrued. Mayor Weaver entertained the motion. Councilmember Kurt Ratfield made a motion to approve the increase in vacation approval. Councilmember Ann Snave seconded the motion, motion carried unanimously. Item D under old business, Mayor Weaver called on attorney Bill Pickett to present for council's review proposed white ordinance. Mr. Pickett stated that he brought the ordinance presented to council last month and that in his opinion, it was ready for the first reading. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion to approve the ordinance presented as the first reading. Councilmember Ann Snave made such motion. Councilmember John Faust seconded the motion. Mayor Weaver called for discussion. Discussion followed. Councilmember John Faust asked that under section complaint interim municipal court procedure lien appeal, paragraph A, that number seven be added back regarding the presence of graffiti. Mr. Pickett stated that he would add. Councilmember Faust also asked to add some verbiage to these sections, limitation of liability for code enforcement, no special duty created. Mr. Pickett agreed to the addition. Mayor Weaver clarified to Mr. Pickett that these changes would not affect this being the first reading. Mayor Weaver called for a vote, motion passed unanimously. Item A under old business, Mayor Weaver called on Mr. Pickett to give council an update on the city sewer lines on Burton Street, that the city did not have easements discussed at last month's regular meeting. He stated that the easements, he had the easements prepared and was waiting on Ms. Dobson to call meeting with the housing authority board to sign them. Mayor Weaver stated to keep this item on old business on next month's meeting. Item F under old business, Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Lenny to give an update on purchase of the Old Integra Bank property located at 125 North Main Street. Mr. Lenny stated that Phil Inram had some questions and that a meeting had been set up to meet with Community Bank of Pickens County, uh, with Mr. Lander, Mr. Pickett himself, and Ryan Keeter of Community Bank. Mayor Weaver stated to keep this item on old business for next month's meeting. Item G under old business, Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Lenny and Lonnie Waters to give an update on the Georgia DOT project involving the widening state route 53 from Highway 515 to East Spring Street. Lonnie Waters stated that he had received an email from the DOT indicating that they needed a locate of the city's utilities. He stated that he had been in contact with current city engineer to determine the plan for a relocation utilities. He also stated that DOT had indicated to him that they would begin acquiring properties for right of ways in preparation for the project beginning around the middle of 2020. He stated that DOT expected how the funding set aside for the project in 2022. He stated there's a utility, uh, aid grant that the city could apply for in order to pay for some of the costs for relocation of the city's utilities. Item H under old business, Finance Director Lisa Hall presented the 2019 operating budget to council approval and read the budget adoption resolution. Councilmember Ann Snave made a motion to adopt the resolution as read and to adopt the 2019 operating budget as presented. Councilmember John Faust seconded the motion, motion carried unanimously unanimously. Item I under old business, Mayor Weaver recognized Sonny Underwood planning his own director to present an alcohol license application to council for approval. He informed council that the new owner, Frank Cass of Peaking Garden located at 28 Bill Wigan Parkway, had completed the application process and required advertising had been met. The owner is now requesting that the application for license to sell alcohol beer and wine by the drink be approved. Councilmember Kurt Ratfield made a motion to approve the license. Councilmember Ann Snave seconded the motion, motion carried unanimously. Item J under old business, Mayor Weaver called on Kurt Ratfield to give an update on closing of Main Street for the car club. Councilmember Ratfield stated that he had spoken with several of the merchants and they all stated that the closing of Main Street was not positive for business. He stated that he was waiting on Tony Fountain to contact car club. Mayor Weaver stated that this item would remain on old business for next month. Item A under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized Joe Walker with Point North Insurance to discuss our upcoming liability and workers compensation insurance renewal. Mr. Walker stated that workers compensation insurance went down by 3% over 2018 and that the city's annual premiums, premiums for property casual liability and professional coverages, insurance increased from 128 to 15 to 135 over 48 from 2018 to 2019. He stated that most of the increase was due to the addition of the fire engine as well as the city had brought back into service some old equipment. Discussion with council followed. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion. Councilmember John Faust made a motion to approve liability and workers compensation insurance as presented. Councilmember Kurt Ratfield seconded the motion, carried unanimously. Item H under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized planning his own director, Sonny Underwood and Jim Lenny, to present the Jasper Planning Commission report. Mr. Underwood stated that he was presenting report for Robert Walker, chairman of Planning Commission. Mr. Underwood stated that on November 7th, 2018, the Planning Commission heard a request for change in zoning from C2 general commercial to R3 high density multifamily residential for the following six land parcels located on John Lane. Parcel 03D, 094, 028 of 2 acres. Parcel 03D, 094, 029 of 1.91 acres. Parcel 03D, 094, 031 of 2.28 acres. Parcel 03D, 094, 032 of 1.99 acres. Parcel 03D, 094, 033 of 1.98 acres. Parcel 03D, 094, 034 of 2 acres. Mr. Underwood said that this change in zoning was tabled at the November 7th meeting and another meeting was held November 30th, 2018. Mr. Underwood informed the council that Planning, the Planning Commission had recommended for the city council to approve the change in zoning from C2 to R3 as applied for by JR McLaughlin of Onyx Investments LLC and owned by Devon Schott &amp; LLC. Mr. Underwood said that the property owners had completed all required advertisements, signage, and public notices. Mayor Weaver stated that he wanted council and Mr. McLaughlin to be aware that this property was served with water and sewer with a grant from Appalachian Regional Commission, the ARC, and focus of the ARC is to create jobs. He stated that the grant was audited in 2014 and that the city took quite a lot of criticism for the lack of job creation in that area. He stated that he was apprehensive about changing the zoning without notifying the ARC. Mayor Weaver asked Mr. Lenny to report what he had found about changing zoning, uh, what he had found out about possible restrictions since the council work session last week. Mr. Lenny stated that he had spoken with Ethan Calhoun at the North West Georgia Regional Commission and that although Mr. Calhoun was not aware of remaining restrictions, he would not give him something in writing as to that opinion, as central language to an email sent to Mayor Weaver from Kami Decker of USDA Rural Development. Mayor Weaver stated that the city's engineer would not give the city anything in writing as well. Mayor Weaver then asked the city clerk to read portions of the audit report from the ARC. In the report, it states that the performance measure creating 300 jobs had not been met. It was also recommended that ARC continue to monitor the anticipated job creation metrics through their validation processes. Mayor Weaver stated that even if the ARC didn't request repayment of the grant money, they could delay or deny the city on future grants. Mayor Weaver then recognized JR McLaughlin to present his plans for the parcels. He stated jobs would be created by the apartments, six being permanent, 161 during construction and 33 through the 100 families incoming supporting businesses in the area. Attorney Bill Pickett stated that in his opinion, before voting to change the zoning, get something from the ARC. Councilmember Ann Snave asked if the city could conditionally approve the zoning change pending approval from the ARC. Councilmember Sonny Proctor made a motion to conditionally approve the zoning change pending approval with the ARC, that the city has met the conditions of the grant. Councilmember Kurt Ratfield seconded the motion. Mayor Weaver stated that he would not sign off on this. He asked Mr. Pickett if this is legal. Mr. Pickett replied that some things you can do with stipulations, but zoning laws are a lot different. He stated, I think you are opening up a can of worms, which could be solved with just a little bit of investigation so that we don't have to go into executive session and deal with a lawsuit. Mayor Weaver called for a vote, motion carried unanimously. Mayor Weaver stated to Mr. McLaughlin to not start anything until this administration gives you the go ahead. Item C under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Lenny and the Jasper Merchants Association to present a request to close Main Street on December 31st and funding for the New Year's Eve celebration. Ms. Haley Bucci from the JMA stated they were requesting to close North Main from 6:00 PM until 1:00 AM from Highway 53 to DB Carroll Street. They also stated that they were paying for police to handle the closing and would take care of the cleanup afterwards. Councilmember Kurt Ratfield made a motion to allow the closing. Councilmember Ann Snave seconded the motion, motion carried unanimously. The JMA asked if the city could help with the funding of the celebration. They asked for $1,200 and stated that the county has agreed to give them $1,200 as well. Councilmember Kurt Ratfield made a motion to give the GMA $1,200 in funding. Councilmember Ann Snave seconded the motion, motion carried unanimously. Mayor Weaver asked Mrs. Bucci to give an update on the Christmas parade. She said due to the weather, it was moved to Sunday and that it went well. Item D under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized Water and Sewer Superintendent David Hall to present to council the new water pump, it's code well number three, the newly built well. He presented council with a quote, "Combers will drilling for $24,659.74." He stated Buyers was the company that drilled the well and that this amount was in the 2018 budget. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion. Councilmember Ann Snave made a motion to approve the purchase. Councilmember John Faust seconded the motion, motion carried unanimously. Item A under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized Finance Director Lisa Hall to present a request to approve Russian and Company LLC certified public accountants to perform that 2018 annual audit. She stated the firm had agreed to keep the price the same as the previous two years at $17,290 and additional $5,000 for single audit if necessary. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion. Councilmember John Faust made a motion to allow the city management to engage Russian and Company LLC to perform the 2018 annual audit. Councilmembers Ann Snave seconded the motion, motion carried unanimously. Item A under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized Mr. Lenny to present to council proposed Christmas bonus and one-time service award for 2018. Mr. Lenny stated that he recommended the Christmas bonuses and awards as proposed at the work session last week. Councilmember Kurt Ratfield made a motion to give employees with less than one-year service, $150, employees with one to 10-year service, $250, employees with 11 to 19-year service, $500, and employees with 20 years or more service, a bonus of $750. With $100 of each of these amounts considered Christmas bonus and the remaining amounts will be considered a one-time service award. Councilmember John Faust seconded the motion, motion carried unanimously. Item one under new business, item B, that should be F, under new business, um, Mayor Weaver recognized Sonny Underwood to present to council the 2019 alcohol license renewal applications. C list to patch here too. Councilmember Ann Snave made a motion to approve the license renewal request and Councilmember Kurt Ratfield seconded the motion, motion carried unanimously. Mayor Weaver recognized Carlo DePiso to present to council his suggestion to lower the liquor license fee to $1,875. He also suggested the license be broken down into payments rather than do at the end of the preceding year. Mayor Weaver stated that after the first of the year, he would form a committee to revisit the reduction. Finance Director Lisa Hall gave the financial report for the month of November 2018. Lonnie Waters gave a report on roads and streets. Chief Reg Lottle gave a report on police activities for the month of November 2018. Chief Steve Roper gave a report of fire activities for the month of November 2018. Councilmember John Faust gave a report on JYSA. Being no other business to come before council, Mayor Weaver asked for a motion to adjourn. Councilmember John Faust made a motion to adjourn the meeting. Council is scheduled to convene next at the special call meeting to be held December 10th, 2018.
Entertaining a motion? Motion to approve minutes as read?
Change what she had. What's the change that she had?
Yep.
Second, second, got a motion, second discussion. Being on our favor, what was your hands? You were not present when you told me you was not present. 2000 and, uh, let's see, December 10th, 2018?
Call council meeting Monday, December 10th, 2018. Mayor Weaver called the meeting to order promptly at 8:00 AM. Mayor Weaver asked the agenda be reviewed and approved by council. Councilmember John Faust made a motion to approve the agenda. Councilmember Ann Snave seconded the motion, motion carried unanimously. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of viewing for the city manager position. Councilmember John Faust made such motion. Councilmember Ann Snave seconded the motion, motion carried unanimously. Mayor Weaver closed the meeting. Councilmember John Faust made a motion to come out of executive session. Councilmember Kurt Ratfield seconded the motion, motion carried unanimously. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion to open the meeting, mayor. Councilmember Tony Fountain made a motion to open the meeting. Councilmember Ann Snave seconded the motion, motion carried unanimously. Mayor Weaver opened the meeting. Item A under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized Jim Lenny to present to council alcohol license renewals. Mr. Lenny stated that he had requests renewed from the following. Murphy Oil Beer Wine Package, Platinum Mountain Dew Sitco Beer Wine Package, and Hans Cooks Inc. Beer Wine by the Drink. Councilmember Ann Snave made a motion to approve the licenses. Councilmember Kurt Ratfield seconded the motion, motion carried unanimously. Being no other business to come before council, Mayor Weaver entertained a motion to adjourn the meeting. Councilmember John Faust made such motion. Council is scheduled to convene next at the called council meeting to be held December 13th, 2018.
Entertaining a motion? So, a motion to approve, say, motion to second discussion? Being on our favor, what was your hand? December 13th?
Thursday, this call council meeting, Thursday, December 13th, 2018. Mayor Weaver called the meeting to order promptly at 6:00 PM. Mayor Weaver asked that the agenda be reviewed and approved by council. Councilmember Tony Fountain made a motion to approve the agenda. Councilmember Sonny Proctor seconded the motion, motion carried unanimously. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussion of the city manager position. Councilmember Kurt Ratfield made such motion. Councilmember Tony Fountain seconded the motion, motion carried unanimously. Mayor Weaver closed the meeting. Councilmember John Faust made a motion to come out of executive session. Councilmember Kurt Ratfield seconded the motion, motion carried unanimously. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion to open the meeting. Councilmember Sonny Proctor made a motion to open the meeting. Councilmember Ann Snave seconded the motion, motion carried unanimously. Mayor Weaver opened the meeting. Mayor Weaver recognized city attorney Bill Pickett to explain to the press and citizens of Jasper where council is at this time on the city manager position. Mr. Pickett stated that council has authorized current city manager Jim Lenny to negotiate with the candidates who have applied. Being no other business to come before council, Mayor Weaver entertained a motion to adjourn the meeting. Councilmember John Faust made such motion. Councilmember Kurt Ratfield seconded the motion, motion carried unanimously. Council is scheduled to convene next at the called council meeting to be held December 28th, 2018.
Entertaining a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes as read.
Motion to approve is read? Motion is second, discussion? Being on our favor, what was your hands? Unanimous? Okay, under, next item, items part of? December 28th? Surprise, I'm kind of confused there.
Call council meeting Friday, December 28th, 2018. Mayor Weaver called the meeting to order promptly at 6:00 PM. Mayor Weaver asked that the agenda be reviewed and approved by council. Councilmember Kurt Ratfield made a motion to approve the agenda. Councilmember Ann Snave seconded the motion, motion carried unanimously. Mayor Weaver called the city manager Jim Lenny to explain the purpose of this meeting. Mr. Lenny stated that this meeting was being held to approve the final candidates for the city manager position and that following approval, that there would be a 14-day comment period whereby the public could send comments to the city clerk. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussion of the city manager position. Councilmember Tony Fountain made such motion. Councilmember John Faust seconded the motion, motion carried unanimously. Mayor Weaver closed the meeting. Councilmember John Faust made a motion to come out of executive session. Councilmember Kurt Ratfield seconded the motion, motion carried unanimously. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion to open the meeting. Councilmember Tony Fountain made a motion to open the meeting. Councilmember Ann Snave seconded the motion, motion carried unanimously. Mayor Weaver opened the meeting. Councilmember Ann Snave made a motion to approve Mr. Brandon Douglas as the finalist candidate for the city manager position. Councilmember Kurt Ratfield seconded the motion. Mayor Weaver called on Mr. Lenny to introduce Mr. Douglas and tell a bit about him. Mr. Lenny stated that there is a biography prepared by Mr. Douglas available to the public. Mayor Weaver called for a vote, motion carried unanimously. Being no other business to come before council, Mayor Weaver entertained a motion to adjourn the meeting. Councilmember John Faust made such motion. Council is scheduled to convene next at the regular council meeting to be held on January 7th, 2019.
Entertaining a motion?
Motion to approve is read.
Motion to approve is read?
Second.
Motion is second, discussion? Being on our favor, what was your hand? Unanimous? Thank you, Lisa. Item six, organization meeting. Councilman Proctor, you have an issue?
Yes, sir, I think that, uh, engaging the public in what we do is possibly one of the most important things that we do do, and I'll go with that, but, um, and, um, I think the council should have prior knowledge of who the appointments are, um, what their duties are. I think we need to make sure that we educate them, that, uh, they do their jobs properly. I think there need to be evaluation processes on the people that are appointed, and, um, I don't feel like we've been given a chance.
Now, I didn't see where I was going to need that. I'm gonna make that presentation tonight. You either vote for them or you vote against them.
I'd also like more information.
I'm glad you do, because I get to make the appointments and I see no reason why you should. And if you, all you get is vote against them, then we move forward.
No, sir, I think that, um, I think that any appointments that are made by the mayor should be supported by the council, and I think that that's where our word up is at.
I want to ask for your support to see, and if you either give it to them or you don't. And as soon as you get to be the mayor, you get to make these decisions.
I disagree with your decision, Mr. Chair.
Well, I'm glad you do.
Your points of order require that on my, uh, decision, that you made a wrong decision.
Mr. Pickett? This has been, this has been the way we've done business, this is the way it's in the codes.
The mayor has a right of appointment and the council can get in the side whether or not to give or approve your appointments.
And I have two appointments tonight, and the rest of the committee stays the same. We do it every January, first meeting in January.
I don't think that's what the code says. I don't understand why you would be resistant to wanting the council to have input on this. That's my point.
Well, I take your point. I'm gonna disagree with you and I want to move forward, and all you got to do is vote no. All the councils for the organization, this council meeting is going to be, there'll be three appointments. Under the Planning and Zoning Commission, now this is for appointments from my position of the chef of the committee. Uh, we have Planning and Zoning Commission physician Luke Colvin, who replaced Tim Borley last year or year before last, can't recall. Luke, when was that?
Last year.
Last year. And I'm asking to replace or to support Luke in another appointment at that position. Entertain a motion? An motion to approve? Need a second? You guys are quite incredible, you know that. Pretty obvious to the public, uh, that there's a show going on for politics and so shall it be. My next appointment, my next appointment, for lack of a second, Luke, you're not appointed. The next appointment is Ms. Karen Proctor, who expires on December 31st, 2018. I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Karen Proctor. Got a motion to prove? This is the chaos that prevails. For lack of a motion, for lack of a second, Ms. Proctor's not appointed. Don Boggs, the Housing Authority, been on the council, been on the Housing Authority for many years, and this, uh, Dobson asked me to reappoint Mr. Boggs, and I choose to appoint Mr. Boggs tonight. Would entertain a motion? Got a motion, Tony? Got a motion to approve? Need a second? Being none? Mr. Boggs is not on the, uh, Housing Authority at this time, Mr. Pickett. Now, I think you're the chairman of the House of Authorities.
Well, your appointments, if they're not a new appointment, they serve until it says time as there is.
It says it expires.
Yeah.
So, all these people would serve until they're appointed? So, if I don't pin it back on the agenda next month, they'll stay right there? Can create more chaos?
Mr. Mayor, I'm trying to prevent the chaos.
Oh, you are?
The council deserves input on who serves on these committees and, and, and we're not saying we don't disagree with your appointments, but we deserve input on it. And to, to receive an agenda on Friday, the, two days before the meeting, and I requested a list of these appointments?
There was not a workshop this week.
Well, that's- Well, that's, that's unfortunate.
Certainly was.
We're just trying to have input on what goes on around here. That's all we're trying to do.
You, sir, you've got more input than you can imagine. So, congratulations. All right, we'll move forward. Committees. I'm going to appoint the finance committee. There'd be Tony Fountain and John Faust. The personnel committee would be Ann Snavey. And, uh... Actually, the committee, the personnel committee is not a standing committee. It's, I'm doing away with the personnel committee. Water committee is Tony Fountain. Public safety is Dr. Sunny Proctor. Street department is Ann Snavey. Parks is John Faust. John, do we still have a J Y S A program?
We do.
Do we need a liaison? Are you still on that committee? Are you still on that board?
Still on the board.
I recommend John Faust to be the J Y S A liaison. Black committee, that is a standing committee, at all. Okay. And the parole property, I've got Jim Looney and Sunny Proctor. Jim, you would serve at that time until you're no longer city manager, and the new city manager would then take that position. Would entertain a motion to approve those committees. Need a motion? What about it, Tony? Can I get a motion? Got a motion? Fellas, for lack of a, did I get a second? Got a motion and a second. Discussion. Being on all favor, what was your hand? Thank you. I'd like to welcome all our guests this evening. It sounds like we've got a room full that's enjoying the democratic system the best of first hand. Good to see you, sir. You too. Item seven, public comment, city manager finalist, Mr. Looney. Mr. Bell, excuse me. Lisa, do you have any comments? Anybody notify you with any comments?
No, I don't have any.
Jim, do you have any?
I have not received any comments or questions.
Okay. Next item, old business sewer line easement on Burton Street. Mr. Pickett.
Uh, the Housing Authority, uh... Mayor has met, and they have gone ahead and executed. They've got the papers, and I've gotten sent from the senate courthouse in the morning for recording.
Okay, so...
And that takes care of that matter from now on.
There's no action required by council? Okay, any questions, council?
We're on our easement for our sewer line.
Talk about you. We vote to accept these items.
Well, yeah, we do that, yes.
When you get it, let it go. Will it be on old business next month then? Okay.
I just have it on my desk at the current time.
Okay. Item B, Main Street Closing Car Club. Mr. Ratfield and Mr. Fountain?
No update from I am.
My neighbor, I will do my best between next month to get in touch with the car club guys and they report what their wishes is and their concerns and report back.
Thank you. We have a merchant with us tonight. Is that okay with you for another month of discussion? And we will pull. Thank you. Item C, update on John Lane rezoning from C2 to R3. Mr. Looney?
At one of our December meetings.
That was last, third one.
I was requested to continue researching any restricted use on the areas served by the tank, a water tank and sewer projects that were funded with, partially funded with a regional commission grant. Enclosed in your package is a letter from Yvette Jones saying that in the third paragraph, "We do not find any restrictions that would prohibit the city from rezoning portions of this property or the property to R3." For your own information and action.
Okay, uh... We have with us, I believe, activated item D. But if we move forward at this, it would be not, no, no purpose if, uh... If these gentlemen speak after the council takes actions. Would you like to recognize the gentleman here that has concerns? And I think I see some other people that may have concerns that were not here at the regular meeting or at the, at the, uh... Planning Commission meeting.
I'll let you continue with the agenda and recognize them. I'm...
I'll be set right where you're at, and we'll be happy to answer questions. I have...
There'll be room for them if I sit over here. We've got two chairs. I'm not sure how many people you've got.
Well, they can speak from their location.
I'll put them around.
Okay, I have Mr. Dilbeck.
Yes, sir.
And I have, uh, Mr. Shouse. I will recognize both of you, and you can speak, and then we'll have counter, back and forth to we decide what the council needs or need not to hear.
You want to go ahead, because you've got some stuff to pass out.
Okay.
How about if I have mine?
Explain, explain why you're here, if you will, for the, for the press, as well as for the council and for the public.
I did not get notified of the meeting. It turns out the notification was sent to my tenant. I own several properties here in town, so I thought it was peculiar that notification wouldn't come to me. But, um... So, I called the mayor, I think, on December 7th, when I did get notified. Actually, saw it on Facebook, of all things. And upon calling the mayor, he suggested I call Jim Looney, which I did. And he asked me to form a letter of my... I want to see if I can back it up there. Maybe we're... Do I deserve one?
Yeah.
Obviously, I'm not. I don't even share with you. So, that's how this all came about. I actually didn't get notified. So, I sent the letter to Jim Looney, requesting I send this. And then that letter, I requested proof of delivery, which could be done since it didn't get mailed. I requested a copy of the zoning application. I don't have that. And I requested a copy of the city's rezoning statutes. I don't have that.
Who did you ask?
I sent it in the letter, uh, which, to Jim, which got via email. So, those are things I'd still like to get, but this property does...
Was that an open record request formed?
No, it wasn't open record. It was a...
Just like that.
Yeah. And I failed to recognize those being mailed. And I will provide that.
Okay, so I've given you two maps. Um, on those maps, the green area, did you see the green dots? That is the property that I just acquired a few months ago.
No, I see the green dot. I was just trying to figure out which one you was looking at.
Yeah, that's partial. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
The yellow dots compose the property that y'all have talked about rezoning to R3. So, they literally invite me. In that area of my green dots, I have one existing building with a tenant, which is actually here, the tenant is, uh, that actually builds jet planes. The first question that come to my mind was, if the apartments were here first, and I ask y'all for permission to put in an industrial lot next to it with a company building jet planes, would you be okay with that? And I kind of think the answer would be no. The noise, uh, the truck traffic that's already there, the condition of the roads on Old Philadelphia. And what I was able to do in the time since I learned about this on Facebook is I went online, and I was able to watch the zoning meeting and the city council meeting. And the gentlemen that are requesting this rezoning made several statements that I don't think will back up to be true. One is, if you look at the white dotted line going from the corner of Jonah and Old Philadelphia, that white dotted line is what it takes to get to Walmart, which anybody that's in an apartment is going to be going to Walmart. They suggested in the meeting that traffic would be going Jonah out to Noah. I've done that in red dots. You can see how much further. It's probably four or five times further to go that way. I would ask all of you to take a look at the condition of Old Philadelphia, both in straightness and in potholes and in narrowness from Jonah to Walmart. It's already in need of repair before we put a couple of hundred apartments on it. Uh, we just recently added another set of stop signs on Old Philadelphia. If you go forward with this, I'm going to say you're probably going to need yet another set of stop signs on Old Philadelphia. I haven't counted them all. There's, there's a lot already there. Uh, the blue dotted line that is directly across from this potential rezoning from commercial to, uh, R3 is Seven Acres Residential, single-family residential that's owned by Ed Johnson, and he's here tonight. And he can speak for himself if you want to ask for him, of course. But he was opposed to this. He chose not to come to the original meeting because he didn't feel like the city would, would hear him since he literally is on the city line, but not in the city. He's opposed to it.
But he did receive notification.
He did get notice. I think I, I might be the only one that didn't. Uh, I think there were several things the city didn't maybe think about when they were considering this. Uh, I know the A R C, and there's a lot into that. But there's even little simple things. Like if you put apartments on both sides of a commercial street, what are you going to have? You're going to have preteens and youth going back across the street, back and forth from apartment to apartment to visit their buddies and that kind of thing. It just doesn't seem like a place to put apartments. But as far as I'm concerned, having industrial already there that runs 24/7, my businesses don't shut at 5:00 p.m. They rent for me. Uh, my tenants are here. Actually, I just heard today, and this kind of shocked me, that a city council member came to visit my tenant. Did one of the city council members go to... You did? It kind of shocks me, because I've been a tenant in a commercial business in Jasper since 2010. I acquired seven commercial properties just in the last 12 months in Jasper. I don't know any of you. I've never been visited or called to any of you.
Mr. Dilbeck, I did make a phone call to you about two weeks ago, right after you spoke to Jim, left a voicemail, so I'm sorry you didn't get that message.
I may have thought you were Sunny Underwood. I didn't get the message.
That was all I knew.
I, I didn't... Uh, the other thing is...
Now, I've been to your building before. You're so little.
I said council.
Okay. Sometime I'm considered a council member. This doesn't get covered.
And I appreciate that. The, I guess probably the last thing I would ask is, this particular investor that's asking for this rezoning has done this before. And I thought it was ironic when I was listening to the videos of when he was pitching to council on, uh... On this would increase tax dollars. This actually is from your December 2013 city council meeting. So, this is way on back. And he kind of did the same thing in here. That's why I brought this. This is for the property that he has down in Gateway. Um, a $50 to $100 million mixed-use development project for Jasper. I've highlighted the areas. They're important. It's both Craig Murford and J. Arthur Glaughlin. They're talking about, they're getting ready to donate a 32-acre park to the city. They're going to donate $50,000 to the city. I don't think any of that ever happened. Those are promises made from 2013. Uh, we flip over to the next page. This project would have a staggering impact on your taxes in the city of Jasper. We flip on over what they've done with the project since 2013 as they put it for sale. There's the listing. It's 5.3 million, and this is for only a third of it. But they did have a staggering impact on your taxes because if you flip all the way to the back, they're the only people I know of in Pitts County who their taxes have been reduced by more than 50% since they acquired it. They're being taxed on 75 acres at $25,000 an acre. So, the city and the county have lost a staggering amount of money. But I don't think that's what they intended when they pitched that. Would the council have any questions for me?
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned industrial use. I believe that's commercial use.
No, sir. No, sir. If you look at either one of those maps, all of these building rooftops here.
Okay.
This is all industrial. If you look at all this in the green, this is industrial. Theirs is currently zoned commercial.
Okay.
I personally think that it would be better use and better location for it also to be industrial. Be a question for another day. There's not a single empty warehouse building in the city of Jasper under 6,000 square feet, and there haven't been for miles. I'm in the process of building four more buildings here. But I've been advised that my tenant that literally abuts this property 25 foot away has no intention of staying and renewing his lease if this does get zoned R3 and apartments coming. Because he won't be able to do his work. He will not be able. You'll have the city out there all the time, the police out there, the noise.
It's my understanding they decided to move before this came about. Do you have any knowledge of that?
I have zero knowledge of that. Uh, the last, I talked to them about the lease. They wanted an extension on the lease.
Okay.
Any other questions for me?
You can sit there if you want to counter that question. I appreciate your time. Shouse?
I echo Mr. Dilbeck's comments.
You're good. I'm favor for the record. Identify yourself and for the...
My name is David Shouse. Uh, developer, investor around here also. I own local business. Uh, I own several lots under multiple... Well, I want to back up just a little bit. There was a statement said by Mr. Proctor earlier about you guys represent the citizens, and you're to be in the know of what the public wants. And besides, Mr. Faust threw some power upgrades to properties, and also Mayor Weaver, which I met, I think officially last month at the city. I don't know any of you guys. And I believe you have two of the largest developers and owners in the city sitting right here, and we don't know, know you. I just want to make that clear. That's, you're talking to my tenants, but you don't know us. So, I own several lots under multiple identities. I was never notified of a rezoning. Work operations. None of them got anything. I learned through an employee of a camp, of a company, the mayor visited the day of the December meeting that this was up. I immediately drove here. I'm sure you guys saw me walk in over at the, uh... The tax court. Uh, I've developed and purchased in this area under the pretext that other commercial properties would be developed around me. All right? The infrastructure was paid for by A R C project grants. That's federal and city taxpayer money that was put to infrastructure, develop commercial property to promote the business and job creation. There is no way any other developer in their right mind is going to build anything else commercial beside this project. There's no way. The city of Jasper owns the rest of the lots on Jonah, I believe, or the majority of them. Correct. Okay? Okay? And to best of my knowledge, neither party, the city of Jasper nor this developer, has put these lots on the open market for sale in the last few years, because there was an argument that they haven't been developed, where you can't develop unless you don't sell to developers. In the past two years, we created jobs in the commercial buildings surrounding the property. Mr. Dilbeck now owns some commercial exchanges. He's promoted business, uh, promoted business. One 16,000 square foot building created 30 jobs alone. Folks, that's five more, five times more jobs in one building than the six lots. You're rezoning. Another building with a tenant in the aviation field will begin testing jet engines this spring. Okay? I don't know what noise that occurs, or you know, whether they're just building or what, but they've had noise there. Another building with a tenant, or excuse me, are they supposed to alter their business plans because the city council's changed and zoned around them? They were here first. They haven't caused any problems. I leased the property that Brad owns now, I own, I leased it to him, they have no intentions of moving. These apartments will disrupt the way existing businesses operate, period. There's no way around it. Larry Brown with Horse Traders, right here, one of my tenants, has told me he would not lease his building with an apartment complex next to him. Okay? Jeff Curlo, Revelation Aerospace, told me he would not lease his building. Lee Morrison, Swag Industries, not only would he not lease his building, I'm in jeopardy of losing the lease purchase option. This city may cost me money that's already in place.
Mr. Shouse, would you recognize your guests and let them speak their minds, did you speak it for them and let them...
I will. I will. You want me to do that?
Since you recognize them, let's see what we're talking about.
Yeah, sure. Larry?
I used to be in the building that the aviation company is in now. While I was in there for two years there on Old Philadelphia in Ralph Hicks, there were numerous times that in the middle of the night, we'd start our days early to try to get our workload processed. If you ran by there in the last couple of years, you noticed that that lot was full of horse trailers. Those horse trailers would be inside that building at night. And we may come in there at 3:00, 4:00 o'clock in the morning to start. I'm an early riser, so I get out and I, and I'll go in and I'll start. And I may be running grinders, I may be cutting and welding, doing all kinds of fabrication work. Well, if a apartment building is within a couple hundred feet of where I'm doing that work, we're gonna upset some folks. You know, I had that same problem several years ago in the early 90s down in College Park, where they erected a bunch of apartments behind the industrial facility that we were working on. We had complaints constantly. So that's kind of what you may be expecting in this situation.
Jeff, gentlemen?
Yeah, I'm Jeff Curlo, this is my partner John Harvey, and likewise to mimic Larry's expression there, we're gonna be making noise, not only jet engines, we've got air grinders, electric grinders, big CNC equipment. So once again, you know, we're only, as you pointed out, 25 feet from the property. You know, who's not gonna hear that noise? And obviously complain.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Yeah, actually, everything that David says is true that he represented us. We came up here at the beginning of the year seeking property away from the city, industrial property. We met David Shouse, he introduced us to Larry, Larry was moving out, and we found that that property was ideal for what we're doing based on the zoning that we were told it was under.
Seclusion.
And the seclusion of it because of the nature of our business. We're a startup. As David said, in the spring, we began to start testing engines. It'll be very, for very short amounts of time, but the time that they do run, they will be noisy. We had planned and still plan on doing that, but only during business hours, not in the evenings. As a startup right now, we still hold full-time jobs, so our hours are more towards the evenings and later hours of the night, but it's all contained and very quiet right now. But in the future, we plan on staying in Jasper, Pickens County, and growing our business to hopefully employ, you know, a dozen, a few dozen people within a couple of years. So I see us staying where we're at right now ideally because of our business plan for at least two years at a minimum. So I don't know how soon the apartments might go up, but there might be a conflict, which there always is generally in our experience when something's noisy and someone's trying to put their child down to bed. I mean, I have grandchildren and some of you do, and children, and you know how you like to have a quiet environment. And we don't want to create a situation where it might cause our neighbors, you know, discomfort. It's just, you know, our nature, but at the same time, we came in assuming that we'd be able to conduct business here at this location for the next couple of years.
Without any discomfort such as this.
Right, yeah. So that's basically, you know, where we stand and kind of our approach. And to mimic what Mr. Dilbeck said earlier about the traffic, I mean, I travel Old Philadelphia almost every day, and Sunday is going to church, and the section between Walmart and, is it Jonah?
Yeah.
Well, right into the peak there where the new stop sign went up is, I wouldn't say undeveloped, but what it would appear to be very narrow for even the traffic that is there now, it's a very busy street. So I, you know, again to echo Mr. Dilbeck, the shortest path to city services is literally on Old Philadelphia from where the proposed apartments are, you know, towards Walmart there on Old Philadelphia. So, you know, I don't know what the master plan is, but I'm sure it's gonna have to include a bit of room improvement.
May I ask you your financial investment ballpark and the number of employees that you intend to ultimately hire in Jasper?
Ultimately hire? Well, what I mentioned was within the next two years would probably be at least a dozen, potentially two dozen people.
What kind of investment do you have ballpark? I'm not trying to find your business, but are we talking $100,000 or...
Yeah, I mean, what do we have on the floor personally in the business?
Yes, yes. Some type of investment that you have.
Yeah, it's pushing about $150,000 right now at least, and we've got...
Add on the equipment.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Push it by 100.
Well, that's true, if you want to look at it that way, so.
We just, oh, we just moved one piece of machinery that tried to move them because of apartment. It's, I mean, it's a major, major undertaking to move the CNC machine that was just putting, I mean, a lot of money, I mean, so.
It doesn't move easily, you don't look forward to moving it. Yes.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Didn't you sell the property to Mr. Dilbeck, the adjacent property? Didn't at one point in time you own that?
Yes, sir.
And you didn't receive notice on those properties? I know the timing of that sale was, it wasn't overlapping, but it was pretty close.
Yeah, I don't know that that timing or when the notice I... I actually ended up getting, I don't remember, ended up getting the notice, but it was actually sent to my tenants, and they put it in with their rent check when rent was due and mailed it to me. So I actually received the notice that the city sent, I have it with me.
But each of those properties should have received notice, is that right, Jim?
Yes, it wouldn't have went to there because that's not my address on file for my taxes, or I don't know how you guys did it, but it should have went, I mean, everything else I get from you guys go to a different address, I'm not sure. But neither of the other two identities that I'm property in got anything.
It's within 200 feet, is that right, Bill? You remember all the notice?
Adjacent to. And I think the timing was, and Sonny, correct me if I'm wrong, that the original, the notice of the original meeting went out to Mr. Shouse, and then the second notice of the, the second meeting went to...
My tenant.
Your tenant. And those were the addresses that were on the tax records?
No. No. That's not true.
Manitoba didn't get anything either.
Excuse me?
Manitoba didn't get anything. That back piece of my property...
Actually, that's the 33 Ralph Hicks, which is not on the tax records. My address is on the tax records.
Was there any, did it go on the tax records? Tell me, was it something with a Chatsworth zip code and a...
Yeah, but that's where it... The county had made a mistake on that. Of all the tax records I have, I own, I don't know, a dozen or so buildings here in the city. All of them are correct except the county made a mistake on one, this one. But it had a Chatsworth city and a, I forget what zip code, but a Ball Brown zip code. But this didn't go to either of those. This went to Jasper, direct to my tenant. The other thing I didn't mention is, the rest of these four adjoining lots that join this complex, I've got engineers, local engineers, local renting contractors, studying and doing plans for the next four industrial buildings going there. Really hoping to have those for y'all in the next month to get permits to...
So they're not permitted yet? We don't have, our building department didn't have any knowledge of that? Is there...
No, they...
Sonny?
There may have been discussions, but I...
There's been discussions, but Jim and Sonny have been aware that I was, that I bought it and was gonna build. We had to redo the lots. Yeah, we had to redo the lots.
We did the one of y'all.
We had to deny. I beat the street back.
Okay.
I think one thing that is highlighted in this whole discussion on addresses is, we need to start sending those certified, and we're certainly moved toward...
To who pays the bill? To where the corporation is. Yeah. And Mayor Weaver, you may want to recognize Ed Johnson that owns a Seven Acres residential and lives directly across from the complex.
Yes, sir, I would like to recognize Ed, and I would accept his apology that we would not pay attention to you, Ed, if you were coming before us and give you all the due respect you deserve.
Well, since I don't live in the city, I didn't think I would have much influence, but the number of cars on Old Philadelphia is somewhat unbearable right now. At busy times, I've killed over 300 cars an hour going by my house, and it's almost impossible to get in the road from a driveway, and working down there next to the road with a weed eater or whatever, obviously it's very dangerous to do that. But if you add a bunch of apartments, you're talking about one and a half to two to maybe three cars per apartment, and the road can't handle it. The super can't handle it.
Thank you, Ed. Nice to grab. Lee?
Hey, I'm Lee Morrison. I own Swag, and I'm down at the end of, down by where Top Gun used to be, where Onyx is now. And just, even just since they moved in, the truck traffic has just skyrocketed. I'm even having some issues. But, you know, when we max out our production, you know, we'll get up around 50, 60 employees, running two shifts, you know, till 1:00, 2:00 in the morning. And the other thing we do, we work closely with the Cherokee County Sheriff's Department, and we use some low-level people that have gone through the system, but there's stipulations, you know, you gotta be so far, you can't be next to schools, you can't be right next to apartment complexes, you know, residential kind of thing, you gotta be so many feet away, and I could see that creating some issue for us.
May I ask you a question for the public? A acre of property of industrial or a commercial property, current gutted, ready for action, ready for building, versus an apartment complex, what would be the difference in value of those two properties? Which one would be the most valuable? If you could put eight to 13 units on each...
The difference in the R30 is they're gonna build up, so they're gonna get more square footage per footprint. They're gonna put more people, more cars, more mouths per acre than you could ever put in commercial.
But if you had a pad-ready commercial lot right now in this city, it's, I mean, there's people wanting, right here, we just had 80 to 90 jobs, I think, between two buildings, when one of the big pitches on this apartment was we're gonna create six jobs plus 33 in the community.
And the insurance impact, if you put apartments right next to commercial, and you got kids, and they're running around, I mean, you're talking about some big, big increases in premiums.
And ironically, I just got called today by my insurance company, and I haven't told the tenants yet, but they want to come out and, they do it on all my buildings, but they come out and do a visual inspection, and they assess the risk just to make sure we're covered properly. So they want to come next week and look at the building, to make those kind of judgments. As far as the value, I don't know exactly how to answer it. The reason I gave you that price sheet also, I bought seven commercial properties in the city of Jasper just this last 12 months alone. Onyx's properties aren't listed for sale except for the one down at Gateway, but I heard of the brewery that was coming in where they're now talking about putting apartments, and I would suggest that you would have called these guys. So I called J.R., he passed me to Craig Murford, I talked to them. They may say they're having trouble selling them, but I made them a $150,000 cash offer on one lot, and it wasn't a corner lot, they, full lap, they turned it down. It was .8 acres, $150,000.
And I'm here with $10,000 more today, so. Are they gonna sell that?
No. Well, they're selling for those prices that are on that price sheet, and just like the one on Gateway, you know, 5.3 million for 24 acres.
The property hasn't been for sale, I mean, Brad and I watch, several others, we watch.
Day long.
And that's, and go back to what Brad was saying, that current developer is developing Gateway. Same thing, 2014, he told the city he'd need over green space, hasn't been done. Told the city to give him a $50,000 check to develop that part, hasn't been done. Said it would be complete within five years. I don't think there's a piece of wood being delivered or metal stuck delivered to building. What are we waiting on? There's been no, this is what's kind of concerns me also on this project, there's been no talk of start dates.
Don't mean the apartments now?
Yeah. No, or the city didn't, council didn't put anything, hey, we'll do this, but you're gonna start on this date, because we're gonna go back to a gateway. No finish dates, no proof of funding. A lot of municipalities now require, hey, show us an irrevocable letter of credit, you're gonna finish this project. What do we want, 10 apartments built and then we hit a recession and a private investor pulled his money out? And we got some projects sitting over there? No. You know, what stops him, since none of these conditions were put into effect, what stops him from selling to another developer and affordable housing being built? You're claiming that we're gonna have upscale apartments. What's stopping him from doing something else? There is no conditions put on it that I'm aware of. I didn't hear them in that meeting. Old Philadelphia is at maximum capacity. On the sports academy that was built right across from Amy's, I already had two cars come into my grass area. Cars coming around, cars too fast. If someone thinks they're gonna go down Jones and get to the Ford lane, they're crazy. They're gonna come out where Walmart is, and it's already way too much traffic. I mean, you got Amy's traffic parking across the road using my parking lot since we're not open in the day. You got elderly people walking across the road to get their biscuits or whatever they're getting there. Just, there's not enough. And that's the other thing, is are, are we as taxpayers on the hook when the road falls apart? 100 families going in and out of that road. That road's gonna degrade very fast. 200 kids, that's what I estimate a family, you know, two kids, a family. We're gonna have 200 kids crossing the roads in front of big rigs, delivery trucks, hanging out down in the commercial park? What's that do to my liability? What's that do to Brad's liability? Kid jumped fence, everybody wants to sue everybody. Do we have to deal with the kids wandering into our commercial area? Also, another point, there's been high case studies performed about living next to high voltage lines. I mean, I was looking it up in other parts of the transmission network. They increase the risk of cancer and health problems. I believe 700 feet is what they recommend anybody building dwelling from those high trans, that's not 700 feet from those transmission lines. We don't want our kids growing up under those, that magnetic stuff. I also question the estimated rent rate proposed by the developer. Local income don't support those rates. I don't know a lot of people that work at some of the jobs we're creating that can afford that rate. Any person that can't afford those rates are not gonna live in the middle of a commercial park, they're just not gonna do it. And I guess my last point is that if you approve this, the city, the citizens of this county and city want their beauty. They don't want the county developed outside this Ford lane, but if you do it, they're gonna force us to go out there. You gave us an area to develop, and now you're gonna take it away from us. So the question is, does this request seem consistent with long-range land use plans in this area? And the answer is no. Last answer, the zoning hinders future local plans for the surrounding property. That's all I got for you.
Questions, counsel?
If I could, just a couple of comments to you guys and to everybody. Number one, thank for being here, because without this, it's a broken system. We need open communication, we need honesty. So I really greatly appreciate y'all being here. Mr. Dilbeck, if I understand correctly, and Jim, you can correct if I'm wrong, there was no ill intent with the non-notification that having been aired?
I don't think there was at all, no.
Absolutely, and so, you know, that...
I've sent them out many times in the past when I've been developing property, but I've always been required to send them out certified, highly recommended.
I think there was a sale, there was the beating of the road and all that, and then some of my property that's very close didn't get put on, I mean, I don't think it was ill intention.
I think Jim said it best when he said we've learned a lesson. And Mr. Johnson, if you don't mind me asking, what year did you build your home, sir?
'85. There was nothing around it. There was nothing around it.
That was where I was going with that. You have a slice of heaven, as the mayor would call it all the time.
Oh, yeah, it was so dark, you had to have a flashlight and stood out the door.
And you do have neighbors that are directly across the street from the company off right hill.
No, he's direct, he's literally.
He has neighbors.
To his right?
Yes.
Who was it?
Yes.
What neighbor?
And so, you know, I understand that they were there before this building too. And so I appreciate you coming forward. Don't ever, anyone never feel like they can't come before the council will be heard. City resident or not, everyone has a voice, everyone has to be listened to. That's our job. So thank you for being here, even if it was for the little prod. Mr. Morrison, your employees, I appreciate you being honest and upfront with that, that's information that we needed to hear. You know, I don't understand the diversity of each job that you've created, none of you. And so it's important for us to have that insight. Again, that open communication goes both ways. I will say, just for the record, I did speak to another homeowner in the area, they reported no issues currently, so they are satisfied with what is going on. And I also spoke to a business owner directly on that street, and they are happy with the possibility of apartments. And so that's just for the record, but thank you guys for being here.
Is that the same business owner that he's promising to buy out?
I have no idea.
Okay, well.
I don't know. I don't know, honestly, I don't know the people personally, so I can't. But again, thank you for being here.
This is a job of business.
It's right on, it's right in the air.
Is it a loser or works?
Business owner. Yeah. But thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Honey, I have a question about the road.
Yes.
When was it last?
Okay, the county has already resurfaced Philadelphia up to the city limits line. All of those roads, Jonah, Noah, the road from the city limits line on Old Philadelphia out to 515, all of those are scheduled to be resurfaced in the spring.
Okay, I just, well, I'm a city official.
Yes.
And last couple meetings, we put a four-way stop over there because of traffic issues.
Some accidents at, well, it's a Confederate Philadelphia Lane and Philadelphia.
We had several requests, I put them up over.
With that, Jim, I'll turn it over to you to address the council as to what, with pick at how we go from here and what, if we've already done something that's done, we shall reap the reward. It don't need recommendation.
Recommendation, same thing as it was last month when I asked you not to do it. But at the same time, it was already done, appears to be done now. And the only way I think that, that you can, you could overturn your decision, but you would have to have another hearing and that issue. But I've heard all this, we didn't hear any of this information the last time we were sitting here.
We've had a lot of new information.
Well, the information's always been out there. I've been living here sixty-three years, and that road hasn't changed in sixty-three years.
And I believe my speech was fairly clear at the council meeting, that this was commercial property and industrial.
But you've already done it, now you've got the letter that I recommended you get, they don't have a problem with the rezoning. And whoever asked for the rezoning is not here tonight. That I saw.
Is there anyone in opposition of what you've heard tonight, like speaking? I think that covers it.
But there were two meetings, am I correct, there was two, one scheduled and then another one scheduled?
They held on a Friday evening at six o'clock, I believe it was, wasn't it, the last one? The only meeting? I don't think we had a zoning meeting, I think our.
Planning commission meeting.
The last one. Planning commission, yes, it was, the council meeting wasn't, but yeah. And there was no one here in opposition, I think the only one here was probably Mr. Lott. We can go back to minutes and check that. But if I recall, the last council meeting, rezoning was conditional on a letter from the ARC, and I asked the developer not to do anything until the administration gave them the go-ahead. And that was the direction, so it has not been changed until the administration moves forward with it. And with other details, I think there can be some, but I believe what we're trying to avoid is legal action and trying to maintain a, the integrity of the area for everyone concerned. The city owns property there as well, and we, we donate to the city, but it's quite an investment, and I believe I heard people tonight might wanna make an offer from that down the road, so I think the commercial property change, or zoning change, would affect the value of our property, which is owned by the taxpayers, Jasper, Georgia. So Bill, give us some ideas, what if, and if the city and the council wants to.
Well, as far as it's concerned tonight, I would have somebody make a motion to table it.
Okay, we're entertaining motion to table, the rezoning.
And that's just it, nothing else.
The final, the final rezoning of the property, because we're already kind of halfway in and halfway out.
Somewhat.
Got a motion, got a motion second, any further discussion? Being on, on the favor of what we show hands? Looks like we got some discussions ahead of us. Thank you, gentlemen and ladies, if anyone didn't speak. With that, we'll move forward. Item D is pretty much taken care of, so we'll go to item E, blight ordinance second reading. Mr. Pickett?
I prepared the changes that we made in the first reading, reduced it to writing. You have a copy of it in your package. I emailed it to Jim to get to y'all, and I would like to ask that the order become effective next.
Well, I would like, that needs, that needs to have a reading.
Let me, let me make one comment. Another John and Kirk, according comparison of the ordinances that were in the book, I gave the ordinance that was sent to Terry to be included in the book. There may be some differences in what you all have, don't know how it happened, but at least in John and Kirk's book, there was some, some differences. Let me see, I copied bills off again, keep it in a very public, safe place, so I know that it's not being dropped or shuffled or anything. Let me try to get it out to you all again.
Aggression for tangling this to this issue tonight?
Table it, you know, whatever.
We've got a motion to table, because it's gonna need to be read. Got a motion second. Motion second, discussion. Being on the favor of what we show hands, because it's getting close to eight o'clock. I believe I might get something passed tonight. Okay, next item, update on 125 North Main Purchase, Mr. Lee. I believe Mr. Pickett's got some information for us on there.
And that's about the purchase of property and why that's going to be in executive session, purchase of new property.
Motion on executive eight, was property purchase.
Second.
I don't tell no, but I hate this guy. Got a motion to go into, got a motion to go into.
I did not.
I give you a copy. Got a motion going to executive session? Got a motion second, discussion, being on the favor of what we show hands? I am so sorry, we're gonna be out of here, Spencer, pump, for session.
Got a motion.
Got a motion.
Second.
Got a motion second, discussion. Being on the favor of what we show hands, we are now out of the float session. Next item, update on New Well Fluff Addy, Cold Road, Mr. Hall.
Do you want?
Did I miss something to say?
No action taken.
No action taken.
Just informative, informative.
I think it's trying to talk.
You want me to get the A block? David, how you doing, Seaton?
I'm doing good, everybody else?
What's that, Cindy?
Mine.
Well, I got, well, I got updates, I guess we invited you ass.
I think I purchased, I think I purchased, well, I don't know. Well, I mean, I've got the number for.
Yeah, so you've got.
I thought you wrote that number from last, last time you thought.
The other stuff. I'm sorry. I'm sure it was. Yeah, we got the well installed.
You've got a lot of your two left. Go ahead.
Okay, we got the pump installed that the council approved in the last meeting.
That pump for the new well?
For the new well number three, and we were right on budget for the fifty thousand dollars that was budgeted for looking for new water sources. So in this year's budget, we set aside some to go ahead and finish that as far as whatever we like to pay Georgia Power for the hookup, whatever comes around for the building and the equipment to run the pump. And once we get all of that, we'll be able to continue on and we'll have three wells.
And you said something about buying a pump, buy.
It's on the buyer. After the agenda.
Oh, and you did. Excuse Tom going. So that's all we're gonna hear from item G?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I do, you will go back up to A and.
Jim, explain, explain what you're talking about. Item A, we went through with the organization meetings, lack of effort, we decided to skip over, but Jim wants to bring it up.
Jim, I'd like to request a call meeting for council on January fourteenth at six o'clock to finalize the contract for the new city manager.
Fourteenth is on what day?
Monday.
One week.
I'm sure it'll be on Friday. No, we're trying to avoid Fridays again.
Okay. And then a motion to approve that, so we can back up, we got January fourteenth for a call meeting? We could have done this then, well. Any discussion? Do I get a second?
Second.
Second, discussion, being on the favor of what we show hands? Thank you, council.
Bill was reviewing the contract, I will distribute, distribute that to mayor and council on, after the last review.
I don't know how you're gonna write that up in a minute, so I'm looking forward to it.
I'll tell her.
Okay. I own a new business, Jim.
Well, I can just go. Introduce Cheryl Evans to council, mayor and council. Cheryl, I am so sorry that you came tonight.
I can't believe you don't charge. This has been a good experience, okay? And I'm glad I brought this.
Cheryl.
It's not too late to charge.
I'm gonna need to read, this is kind of my notes, and I'm gonna share some pictures. I'm speaking to the whole room, I'm asking council to consider a project, but have all, any of you or all of you heard about pickleball?
I have.
You are welcome to come down, Monday through Friday, at the rec center, most days we're there from ten to twelve. And if you don't know what pickleball is, it's a whole lot of fun. It's an easy game to learn, and if you Google it, those are not the people we play with, so feel comfortable to come and play with us, because we will teach you how to play. It's much easier than that. And by the way, I'm Cheryl Evans, and I'm newly appointed from the USAP, which is USA Pickleball Association, the ambassador for Pickens County, and what that means is I kind of just coordinate and control and develop and, you know, try to help people learn and have fun and find places to play. So during my three years here in Jasper, for about two, I'm gonna put this down, a couple of years ago, we didn't have many places to play. There's a place in, or Big Canoe, they have developed courts that are solely for dedicated pickleball. Then we have, at the rec center, someone found out that they would let us put up a temporary net, which is, it folds up the size of a bag chair that you would take camping, and then you use a racket. I kind of ramble it all over the place here. That's what you play with. That's the ball, it's kind of like bigger than a baseball, little ball, it's similar in nature. So we talked the rec center into letting us play some pickleball. Actually, there was two other ladies that played there, and we found out about it, and a few of us started making a reservation to play. And those eight people, two years later, have turned into eighty-five people trying to play pickleball in and around the Jasper-Pickens community. So we were able to line the courts down there, buy some nets, some balls, dividers, and create an environment indoors, which is only good for the morning hours when quite a few folks work. So there's a lot of us that are able to navigate our schedules and make that work. Then recently, Bentree, this spring, lined their tennis courts to form four pickleball courts, and it still leaves the tennis courts intact and the pickleball courts can be used. And they, they use temporary nets, so it gets taken down and cleaned up, and tennis exists, pickleball exists, except the nice thing about it is you can put two pickleball courts on a tennis court, we're just painting some lines, and you can double your occupancy out there, so you can get eight people per tennis court playing, so you get sixteen people playing at a time. In Big Canoe and Bentree, those are private communities where you have to be a resident and also pay a fee to play. And at the rec center, we came up with the idea, since the rec center allows us to basically be their guests there during times that they don't, aren't overbooked with all these different great things that they offer. This Pickens Pickleball Group, Pickens Pickleball Friends is kind of what I dubbed it. Everybody started talking about, you know, how we could do things, how we could help. We're very self-sufficient. We decided just toss a dollar in the pot, a donation, it's not a fee or collected, you know, demanded from anyone. So that's how we did the lines on the floor, we got permission to do that at the rec center. Then we also bought the nets, the balls, some extra paddles, so if people come in off the street that don't know how to play, we can offer them a paddle and teach them the game. You can pick it up very easily, it's, it's not, it's not difficult to learn, it's fun to learn, we laugh and have a good time, it's very social, we don't schedule it as leagues or anything like that. So the community center is great, but it only offers a limited amount of time, and not everyone that would like to play can play. So a while back, and probably if all of you are, are local Jasper people.
I'm a Texasan.
Okay, you're good at this, Van Alway, right? Okay, you'll notice that this, this picture right here is actually at the duck pond courts over there in Jasper City Park, where we took, and you can take and draw chalk lines out and put up our temporary nets. So this is actually, we utilized that area before, and then that's a larger spot, so that's, you know, the courts that we're looking to request this project. So what we want to do is improve this so that we don't have to chalk and set up the nets, you know, that would take a long time. I'm losing my train of thought, I'm sorry. I'm thinking about hurrying so you guys can go watch the game. Anyway, what we wanted to do, as the USTA Tennis, believe it or not, sent me a welcome to pickleball as the ambassador, and said that there are grants still available for places that have tennis courts that wanted to incorporate pickleball. And there's an eight hundred dollar grant for that. So I kind of put the cart before the horse, and I put in the information, and it's actually approved, if we can move forward with this, that if we can get the courts pressure washed and the lines painted on there and develop it into a multi-use, not taking away tennis, but only adding the flexibility of pickleball, that they will put eight hundred dollars towards that. So we see that as a huge plus, and if it's lined correctly, and I'm gonna leave this for you all, because that's a lot to take in and a lot to think about, so.
Don't leave the paddle, not to.
Not the paddle, no. In the morning, don't leave that, no, no, don't touch my paddle. So anyway, but all the little bulleted points that I wanted to try to share with you all, and it is, it's a lot to take in, but basically what we're asking for is your help in cleaning and relining those tennis courts. Now, there is one little added project that might need to be done, on the side where the playground is, that back. that back corner, but there's a hill and then the playground area, that back corner, which is over here, water runs off, so it fills up with mucky stuff and it's, could be a slip hazard and it would stain something if we upgraded those things. Um, so anyway, that would probably need to be done to prevent it from being destroyed after, you know, we do this, hopefully. Um, it would be visually an improvement over there to that area, because it's a delightful little park over there. Uh, we clean that up, we'd still be able to do tennis, we could add pickleball. It gives, um, an opportunity for people who don't live in one of the communities that are, you know, residential only in there to participate because you guys, they're delighted, they're open nights and weekends. Um, we could have the ability to give some instruction to some beginners, I mean, even a beginner in pickleball loves to share the game with newcomers and it's really a very social and a very fun game. Um, let's see, the, the rapid growth that we're experiencing, we had fifty players show up the other day at the rec center and we only had three courts to play on, do the math. But everybody plays so nice and they're very patient and they were, you know, they all look for opportunities to find other places to play. Um, it's great exercise, it's very healthy, anyone from a child up to, I've played with people with prosthetic legs. We, we play with everyone and everyone loves to play football. Uh, so we'd be happy to help with that, we'd be happy to help maintain the park, you know, bring the leaf blower when we're going to play, make sure it's cleaned up afterwards. Um, thank you.
The only other request was if we could take and put a chest layer so that when we have the, the nets, they're horrible, that there's a chest there on site that we could take and put in that, put those nets into that chest and then be accessible with a lock for anybody that's, uh, wants to.
Uh, the, and a side note to that, is even if we have those nets locked, if just a, you know, say three or four of y'all want to go over there and play, if the courts are lined correctly, in addition to the, uh, the lines get extended beyond the tennis courts, and this is actually at Bentree this morning, I took that one, this is just a stock photo. Uh, if it's lined correctly, you're going to get four courts, two on each tennis court. But if you walked up and you didn't have the temporary net, you can use the tennis net and that court is also measured out perfectly if you do all the lines correctly. So we'd be super happy to help with that, um, I do have the contact at the, uh, USTA, Heather Blythe, and I can share all of that information and we've got, I'm sure people could help if, if you guys could help provide the workers, we could help too.
With your permission, what I would like to do is, uh, with, uh, their grant money, uh, provide the, uh, the box, uh, paint, we would do the labor in, uh, putting the lines on and, uh, pressure washing the, uh, courts. That's not something that's going to be done.
Got a motion to approve. Got a second. Thank you, got a motion, second, discussion. Let me ask one thing, it looks like something good for old people.
Well, and that's my point.
And the fat people, Jim. Old fat people. How does that?
It, it's, um, it's a great sport and you can use as much energy as you want and as.
If you want to win, you got to use a lot of energy.
Well, the better the player that you become, the least amount that you have to move around, but we, we all love it. And I told my husband, we, we've never done anything together, like, or a sport or anything, and I never played tennis or anything like that. And he retired and I said, oh, here, I bought you a paddle, I'm having fun doing this, yes, it's easy.
All right, what was your hands? That's unanimous.
Thank you.
How about that? And you talked way too long, we could. We could have watched that game a long time ago. Thank you for telling me, I think it's going to be great.
I think it will be too and let us know if we can help.
And, and the tennis courts, when they're used, are busy, but when the, they sit eighty, ninety percent of the time, no use. And this, this should get a lot of light, people.
Okay, and then I'll just pass along the. Would you like to keep this to look at it and just? Okay. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking the paddle.
Item B, alcohol permit, liquor, I love New York pizza, sunny.
Mayor, council. Mr. M R. God for solemn, I think.
That's close enough.
Okay.
You got that, please see.
He would like to purchase a distilled spirits license for I Love New York Pizza.
Okay.
And we've only done this one other time after we had five distilled spirit licenses until this Christmas and now we only have four. And the only other time we have given a license out after the first of the year, the council agreed to just give them the license when they paid for it because they've already been through their uh, background check, fingerprints and all that from their beer and wine license. And I just wanted to, to know if the council wanted to do it that way.
Okay, council, we were asking, or Sunny's asking for your approval to approve I Love New York Pizza conde, with the, with the stipulation that all of their requirements have already been met for beer and wine, which is duplicate, duplicate of, uh, distilled spirits, same, no difference, fingerprinting, advertising. And, uh, Bill, do you see any reason why we could not allow them to proceed forward if it meets the state requirements?
Oh, if it meets state requirements.
You can, you can not do that anyway to get the license. State, state's going to be the issue, makes more than the city.
Right.
Well, then if that motion's approved, moving forward with the distilled spirits for I Love New York Pizza. Got a motion? Motion second, discussion. Ben, off of what was your hands? That's unanimous, thank you, Sunny. Item, uh, C. Alcohol license, beer and wine request for continuation for advertising, I believe we talked about for Woodbridge.
Yes. What we allow people to do when they buy a restaurant for some, uh, someone is to use their license to sell alcohol until they get their long clothes and squared away and the li, then the restaurant becomes theirs and then we change the license to their name.
And they'll be going through all the.
Right.
Partnerships.
They have to go through all the fingerprinting and everything everybody else does.
Okay. So you're asking tonight, if I can get this straight, for Woodbridgeian, I think it's Dwight and Harmony that are going to ask him for this and they're going to use Hans's, uh, does Hans have a license now?
Yeah, he does. He, he did have when they took the place over, I understand it.
He didn't renew it. He didn't renew it. Uh, but, but he's still there and so he can renew it, basically his name.
But Dwight renewed Hans's license for him.
Okay.
I thought, I thought he didn't apply.
Oh, he didn't apply.
Didn't Hans not apply? Or is that?
He let.
Nobody applies for renewal. I thought, oh, we got a foreign part.
Did, did, did he buy a license back in, for, for two thousand eighteen?
Yes.
When? I, I think I remember it was approved, I do.
He, he did that, but, but December thirty-first, it's over with.
Of next year, he bought it for this year, two thousand nineteen, correct?
Dwight bought it, paid for Hans's license for two thousand nineteen.
Right. And we want to continue letting them use Hans's license that's been paid for.
Yes.
As they are trying to get the license in their name, is that what we're asking?
They're trying to get the Woodbridge ball.
Right.
And supposedly it will be done this month.
So what we want to do is allow them to start advertising, but yes, still continue selling beer and wine.
Right.
That's not that difficult. Well, then it's that a motion to allow the Woodbridge to continue, uh, under the name of Hans Ruffert until they change it over and get the purchase, or get the transaction for the property into their name. And if that a motion? That's what I thought you said.
Well, my, Bill was, I was trying to listen to him. What was it, didn't he say something?
Bill, if, if, if Hans bought a license.
In his name.
Two thousand nineteen, uh, then they can continue to do business under that license. But when it comes to transfer, you, you can't transfer an alcohol license.
They got, they'll have to pay for it, is that understood?
The way we do it, now, this may be not the way you want to do it and that's fine with me, all I need you to do is tell me. But the way we do it is if, uh, Peking Garden just sold a couple of months ago.
Right.
All right. They operated under Peking Garden's license for this new guy Frank C. that bought it. This is so that they don't have to stop s- serving alcohol for two months.
Going through the process.
And going through the process.
And then after it was over, did the new owner purchase the new license?
No, he purchased it, well, yeah, oh, yes.
Okay, that's what I think people was asking, correct? I know it's going to be a mistake, but what do you, what do you mean? I've done this before when I sold my business. And it, it was towards the end of the year, rather, he, he, the new purchaser, what he did was we formed a management agreement that he managed my license to the end of the year. Then he applied and what they're saying is the same thing, they'll do it and once the building and everything transfers, then. With, with, I'm stopping, with, with is that a motion to allow this transaction to continue?
Make a motion, we allow the request for continuation of beer and wine until it's deemed necessary that they apply for their own.
That sound good? Need a second?
Second.
Motion second, discussion. Ben, off of what was your hands? That's four, four and, oh, I'm sorry. Unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
All I know, Mr. Bentrell, I am so tickled that you have seen me for this entire meeting.
You're welcome.
I hit him up.
Enjoyed.
Jim? I got the Shoreline Highway fifty-three, is that correct?
Yeah, Speedy Burger.
Stormwater. That's, that's stormwater, okay.
What's wrong with your legs?
I'm tired.
Long day, you got moved out of here for it.
I remember when you and Max Tony just walked through mud together, back and back.
That's right.
I'll save a lot for.
Um, I've been asked to look at the Speedy Burger storm system and I've kind of insisted that we do a camera, throw the camera down that entire system. And let me just say that this is the worst system I've worked on in about fifty-six years.
Can I, can I have a point of wonder to say I told them so?
So, everything on this system needs to be repaired with the exception of the two catch basins crossing fifty-three. But the tops need to be repaired and changed to a ten thirty-four because of the low spot in the road to catch more water.
And there would be a state.
State issue. Okay, let's quit and start there. I've got two maps, I didn't make the, or I was told not to make the working session and I didn't bring enough maps today, so I apologize. Um, there's two maps on your desk that you can refer to. Which starting out here, where the first catch basin that closest to, uh, Speedy Burger and you can see the pipe coming down fifty-three dumping into the catch basin and flowing on down past the Speedy Burger. Now, the first, first eighty feet is a forty-eight inch manhole with steps in it. That somebody's put in as a pipe.
Now, that's, that's on the Speedy Burger side or the other side?
On the Speedy Burger property.
Right, okay.
And the steps are catching trash as it goes down through there.
Are the steps at the bottom or side or top?
Right in the middle of the water.
Okay.
Never seen anything like that in my life. Then it transitions into a fifty-four inch pipe. So we're stepping up from a forty-eight, no, I'm sorry, there's another, another section of forty-eight inch corrugated metal pipe. Then it transitions into a fifty-four inch corrugated metal pipe. And in the center of that pipe, it has eroded and started caving in.
How, how far into the Speedy Burger property is this? Nearly out of the building, isn't it?
Uh, it's right in the southwest corner, southeast corner, excuse me. It's where the transition between the manholes and corrugated metal pipe that is deteriorating. The life expectancy of the corrugated, corrugated, corrugated metal pipe is only fifteen years. So that's explanation on why it's caving in.
It's in the, but it's in the parking lot of the.
It's in the parking lot.
Okay.
Then it transitions into a thirty-six inch corrugated metal pipe. You should be stepping up in size as you go through the system. And at every point where the pipe changes direction or joins a different sized pipe, should have a catch basin, I mean a junction box where the tie, where they tie together. But where this fifty-two inch pipe, a fifty-four inch pipe ties into the thirty-six inch pipe, there's nothing. There's a hole about six inches wide on the surface where all the mud and everything goes right through into the system.
Should have been a drop inlet?
It needs to drop inlet badly. Then it flows on down and ties into an existing junction box that's about eight foot by six foot in diameter. There's eight different pipes coming into that junction box.
And that's in the grassy area behind.
That's in the grassy area. Then it continues on down, let me see where we are. You can see it's flowing pretty good, we picked a day where it wouldn't be that full for us to get through it.
I'm just hoping that's not pouring into that water.
I don't know what's in the water, but we waded through it when it, where the pipe was big enough. Now, this is going in past the, the junction box on down to where that boat storage used to be. And there are four places between that junction box and where the pipe turns, water's flowing into the pipe system from the surface because the pipes don't join. Again, every time it joins, it should have a, a junction box of some sort. Then it comes on down and makes a turn, but the turn is man-made. I think they just bent the pipe.
So you're sure you're down to, um, about a foot and a half?
Less than that.
Really?
Yeah. And it kind of backs up at that point. And then it turns again and flows into the existing creek. And that whole length of pipe where it turns going into the creek, somebody's been down there with a front end loader pushing it, pushing the pipe. And it's half full of mud. But there's holes in the pipe, obviously.
There's construction work going on there, that's not part of it, is it?
No.
Okay.
And this is why the boat people were still there. Because I've looked at this situation two or three times.
And also, I've seen water up to the pipe itself from the Beaver Dam, that restream.
That's right, that whole last section was underwater.
Yeah, it, uh, can't, can't work, the best part about it, it comes out to the surface and goes.
So I think whoever were working on the Beaver Dam may have hit that pipe with a teeth.
No, the Beaver Dam's further downstream, it backs all the way up down the park.
Well, I can't explain why somebody's been in there digging with a front end loader.
We've not been in there having a David with soil.
Not to my knowledge.
So you're coming out right there?
Yes. That's where it's backing up.
Okay, with that, you're preaching to the choir, we've known this to be an issue for a long time, but usually, uh, it backs up when the Beaver Dam, it actually functions most of the time, the rain we've had over this past year, I'm, we've had several events.
It's coming out of the surface, it's backing up and coming out of the surface.
If they don't come out of the surface, then we're back up in the road.
Exactly.
And maybe one has opened up to get out of the road, DOT may have done.
No.
But this road, this road, this pipe is quite a history of several different contractors over the year from the time they built the Speed Burger and the, I promise you, the pipe's way over fifteen years. Okay. pipe's way over fifteen years, okay?
So it's long before the inspections.
More like about forty years.
Long before the inspections took place.
Oh, sure, yeah. That was built by the people who owned the property.
Well, that, that was obvious when I saw the two sections of manholes and horizontally.
We've, we've gone in over the years and tried to secure, you see probably the grassy area, we tried to build a junction box there once the tile was, different pipe in, I think goes back into the nineties, uh, but still it flooded and if it ever flooded, we'd catch it with it, more likely the beaver pond backed up the water all the way down behind Sable Lock, uh, using that location. But anyway, what's your recommendation?
I think the whole system needs to be replaced.
Including the parking lots and?
That's.
Can you estimate any cost?
No, I haven't gotten that far, as I understand it from city staff, we do have permission to build two detention facilities, one on the north side of fifty-three and one on the south side of fifty-three. So I recommend we take that into account.
Where would you put one on the south side?
In that grassy parking lot where that, um, that sixty-five inch junction.
Owned by the preacher, preacher family.
Yes.
And I understand we have permission.
Okay, which recommendations?
Recommendation is we get a clue from Ben on, uh, preparing documents for Ben, get it out before, uh, Ben, see what's gonna cost us.
Okay. Is that motion to proceed from the request? Got a motion? A motion's second, discussion? Ben, on our favor, what was your hands? Did I, were you pushing that camera? Were you in that?
I was in it, but I wasn't, I don't know how to manipulate it.
But you, you, you were actually walking, you didn't take Lonnie with you, did you?
I've walked it twice before.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it.
That'd be stormwater for the future references, I'm at least, to the sewer.
Yeah, it is.
Hopefully some state money also.
Should be.
I'm not sure they're gonna be too excited about being on private property now, you told me the one hundred and fifty-three's, David, I think I'll give you a picture.
Yeah, small.
Uh, okay, with that, out of E, Highway one oh eight water line repair, David?
How we want to wait, water repair goes along the same as that with all the rains we've had, our line on Highway one oh eight right before Eaton Road was washed away the other day, actually loaded to the top and we're gonna need to go back with duct lined line in that area, uh, from one side of that creek, uh, right beside Eaton Road on one way, um, and y'all should have the prices.
No, I don't think I should have booked it.
What, put it in there?
The Florida line?
Yes, I'm looking at it.
Okay, Florida line.
Ninety-nine, sixty-three.
Yes.
Yes, five hundred and forty feet of duct lined line, Florida line was nine thousand nine hundred and sixty-three dollars for the, uh, material to do the repair and core remain for ten thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars and eighty cents, that's five hundred and forty-three duct lined line and all the fittings, necessary sleeves and stuff to put it together. I know you're familiar with this area, this is just gonna run the line, case it and do duct lined all the way through. The beavers keep building the dams down there too, and whenever they build their dams, when it floods, the water backs up, water runs right to the top, we should have cased it.
Is, is there a chance of abandoning that line and going a different route?
Well, I think if we do the duct lined line and the casing, I don't think it would, I think it'll hold.
I'm just thinking maybe go on the other side of the road or, or turn earlier and try and get up, uh, Penley Road.
The people on the other side of the road just continue for pulling in their driveway, so.
Okay. I have a quick question on the, the difference, I don't know, I see that Fort Line is ninety-nine sixty-three, ninety-two?
Yes.
And Core Main is ten one seventy-five, eighty?
Yes.
What's the difference in the material they have listed or?
Uh, one of them, uh, is doing a grip ring and one of them's doing a Megalug, but they're virtually the same thing, this is whatever company likes to use as far as that's what holds the pipe together whenever you go to a fitting, but they're basically the same as far as pricing.
Entertained a motion?
We've had, one other question, we've worked with Fort Line before.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
Make a motion that we take the Fort Line quote for nine thousand nine hundred and sixty-three, ninety-two.
Motion.
Bill.
Second, second, got a motion, second, discussion.
Where would the funds come from?
Uh, well, this, 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 it could come out of any project because this is gonna be a priority, otherwise we'll lose our whole water system. You hear that off the other night, didn't you?
Fire and repairs budget.
We're running it with fire number right now.
Okay.
Uh, emergency projects or any of the projects that we have listed will have to be bumped whatever we need to do, uh, because it is temporary, temporary right now. And all of Eaton Road and the bundle very core places off of Eaton Road when you make the right.
Right, right.
Right.
I want to take you down to get fit, to get front of the fit.
Once we get the pipe, we should be able to do it in a couple of days and with the committee, it's got a drive down there, we almost lost track of down there the other day and then it stopped down, meant to bust at the pipe.
They're, they're, it's, they're so spongy right now, we couldn't get anybody in. They're basically in a, in a late bid.
Yes.
Okay, any other discussion? Ben, on our favor, what was your hand? Thank you, David. Leak detection.
We'd like to get approval to, uh, myself and Mel and Tom, get over at Max Point, uh, Greg Giles, Lonnie, we've all been agreed that Max Point done a great job last year and we'd like to off of the budget, uh, go ahead and let them do, uh, their work this year also, uh, for twenty-five thousand on off of the budget proposal this year.
What are you gonna do?
Same leak detector again, there were some areas that we didn't get to that Lonnie's got mapped and, uh, this brain.
This was a big part, or what we did last year was a big part of getting the increase in the, uh, water production. Entertained a motion? So, the motion to approve the leak detection request?
Second.
Motion and a second, discuss, discussion. Ben, on our favor, what was your hand? Thank you, counsel.
Uh, request to get approval to get our sewer pump on Indian Forest replaced that was on the budget, uh, I'd go ahead and get that pump replaced, uh, we're down to one pump in that area.
One of the parks, right? Entertained a motion, how much is it?
Uh, y'all have the lead.
How much for the record please, if you got it?
It's at fifteen thousand seven hundred and ten dollars for George Electric.
Yes.
James Electric is thirty-five thousand three hundred and seventy.
No, the, the prime, I have fourteen, eight, four, five, we'll give you all the different prime.
Well, it gives us a total of thirty-five thousand.
When I send it, it sends something else of the.
Yeah, there's, there's four things.
Yeah, it's got a fifty horse motor, a hundred horsepower motor. We need the thirty-one.
You have a coffee?
I'm sorry?
Thirty-one horsepower.
David, we need a copy from the, please, there's some apples, apples here.
Okay, so then we're looking at ABS at the bottom, the thirty-one horsepower, four sixty volts, at the fourteen eight forty-five.
Yes, sir.
Everything above that.
Is something different, yes.
That's not what we're looking at.
Yeah, we're looking at the one pump, the ABS pump there, thirty-one horsepower, fourteen thousand, uh, eight hundred and forty-five, we got one on the bottom. You see it coming?
Yeah. Which one you, which one?
So James Electric is the.
James Electric's low bid.
Entertained a motion? Take the motion, we take the low bid. Motion for low bid, that'd be James Electric, that's true?
James Electric.
Okay, you need a second?
Second.
Got a motion, a second, Kurt, discussion. Ben, on our favor, what was your hand? Thank you. Out of H, Kern Sledge Pump, White Water Plant?
Yes, and we've only received one bid, James Electric, said they couldn't get our pricing in line, so they weren't even gonna bid, but we could receive a no bid from James Electric, we got a bid from Exile Pumps, which is flat, better known as flat, of four thousand eight hundred ninety-eight dollars and thirty-two cents and this was also on the budget.
Yeah.
Yes.
Entertained a motion to approve the only bid?
Uh, motion to approve the four thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars and thirty-two cents.
Second. Need a second? Got a motion, a second, discussion. Ben, on our favor, what was your hand? Thank you. Thank you, David. All right, uh, filing, finance, mayor's report, financial report, Lisa?
Um, the report you have is for the last month of the year, December, for twelve month and it will change a good bit, we'll be doing all our closing out, um, in the next two or three months, um, but at, at this time, we're, we are under budget in all the departments, we collected a hundred and seven thousand, five hundred and seventy-five thousand in sales tax, um, this month for a total of one point, almost one point three million for the year, um, in Splosh, we collected eighty-four thousand two hundred and fifty for a total of nine hundred and eighty-four thousand for the year, uh, cash balance in our Splosh account right now is eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand and I don't really have anything else to tell you, so I have questions.
Questions, counsel?
Thank you.
All right, Lonnie, Rhodes and other reports.
Mayor and counsel, uh, very little report because, uh, due to the holidays and everything, some of the meetings have been changed, I'll be going to, uh, Cardiff tomorrow to meet with the DOT, they will give us an update, it's quarter of the report, they'll give us an update on all projects going on in Pickingstown and the city of Jasper, uh, we'll have Penny Rhodes meeting, uh, on, uh, Wednesday and we'll have a meeting and the DOT will be there also for any questions.
She came today?
Uh, due to the holidays, uh, so that's about it except, uh, the Lameed Grant had been turned in, I had talked to them last week, uh, we'll be getting a little over sixty-one thousand dollars from Lameed, uh, we have, uh, put some sidewalks to be redone and the DOT says that that can be done with the, with Lameed money and we'll need thirty percent of that, uh, match it and that's about it.
Okay, I wish I hadn't mentioned all the big numbers, Ventrell behind you there. Don't go wild. Uh, Greg?
Good evening, mayor and council. City Department Police Department from the month of December responded to seven hundred and thirty-six calls from service and nine one one center for a grand total of two thousand and eighteen, ten thousand eight hundred and sixty-two calls and just, uh, we had almost thirty-nine more calls than we did the previous year, so about the same. I responded to sixty-one motor vehicle accidents, issued total forty-seven citations for following three for speeding, one seat belt, three for shoplifting, uh, three for unlawful use of wireless device, that's texting while driving, uh, eight miscellaneous, one suspender over the road, one possession of marijuana, less than out, four state trophies, a total of eighty-eight for grand total of one hundred and thirty-five citations in the seat court, twenty-four state warrants taken from following, two, uh, two for battery, family violence, two simple battery, two simple battery, family violence, two criminal trespass, one possession of methamphetamine, one tampering with evidence, one harassing phone call, one disorder of conduct, one theft by deception, five shoplifting misdemeanor, one felony shoplifting, two violations of Georgia Control Substance Act, felony in possession of controlled substances, felony in possession of drugs and weapons by inmate, felony. This lady's called upon to thirty-one alarm calls, fifteen disorderly, four harassment, seven trespassing and roaring, fifty-seven suspicious activity, sixteen domestic calls investigated, zero burglars.
How many texted?
Three.
Three? I met a lady yesterday and didn't even look up as she passed me, I swear never texts again. Security to death. Any questions, counsel?
Chief?
Hmm?
Where was standing that new truck?
Picked it up today, it's in the back parking lot, PD, we got it measured for striping today and then we'll get with our, we'll get striped first and we'll carry it to Blair, Blairville for the whistles and bells inside of it and stuff, but it is here, I picked it up today.
Fantastic.
That's great, don't worry for it, so.
You're welcome.
And chief? Chief, bro?
Thank you.
Mayor, counsel, I apologize if I was snoring through here.
It's been a long winter.
For the month of December.
Plum and clots you out, didn't they?
Oh, for the month of December, the city's fire department responded to a hundred and thirty-one murders, those were one structure fire inside the city, none outside, one vehicle fire in, none outside, one grass fire in, none out, ten motor vehicle accidents with injuries inside and one outside, fifty-five of murders with medical responses in the city, twenty-seven outside, twenty other calls in, fifteen out, uh, as of the end of the month, which is a year end total, thirteen hundred and forty-six, I also included a year end breakdown part of your book, we won't go through that tonight.
Thank you.
Uh, fire inspection looked at three sets of plans for renovation, three sets of seventeen cars.
And those who wonder what's in and out for these set of plan toward, but I always like to at least begin of the year, we cover quite a bit of territorial outside of city limits, uh, always have and probably always will.
Yes.
Uh, any questions, counsel?
Chief, thank you and I want to, people, thank you guys for the help on New Year's Eve. Everyone that's out there, keep moving.
Thank you.
All right. With that, Kurt, you wanna give a quick update on their New Year's Eve celebration?
So, New Year's Eve went well, the merchants association hosted the annual party on Main this year, again DJ Dando came out, had a larger crowd than last year even with the rain, the rain was intermittent, uh, temperature was great, though it peaked fourteen degrees last year, we were in the high forties, low fifties this year and looking forward to next year again.
John, J Y S A, uh, baseball, we're on the website, the restaurants on my left. Entertained a motion?